Make the call of meeting to order. This evening, I am the temporary leader of this meeting until such time as the chairman of the school committee is elected. We'd like to start tonight's meeting, if we could, normally with the pledge. What we'd like to do first is have a moment of silence. This past weekend, we lost Frank Catino, longtime Middleborough teacher and MEA president. He was an honored faculty member, and we sadly mark his passing unfortunately. So if we could stand and have a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance, please, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate Marcy for going on her election and Rich Oakley on your reelection. That forms a six-member committee, and the six-member committee needs a chair. So I would, at this time, accept nominations for the chairperson of the Middleborough Public School Committee. Mr. Oakley?
I'd be keen on the mission that Mr. Young be our chair, and if it's okay, I'd just like to expand a little on that.
We'll do that after.
Is it okay?
I have a nomination for Rich Young. Is there a second?
Second.
I saw Marcy's hand first, sorry.
I'd like to make a nomination as well.
Okay, hold on. So Zeke, you were second-hand? Okay. Is there any discussion?
Sure, I just wanted to describe a little bit about why I got to learn an awful lot about what it takes to be the chairperson of the Middleborough School Committee by serving as vice chair next to Mr. Young. Had to run a couple meetings, sat in on some agenda meetings, and realized just the scope of what it is that Mr. Young does for us. And although I would love to, at some point, chair this committee, I cannot commit the extensive amount of time that Mr. Young puts into being our chair, and I think he is the right choice for this, so I'd love to vote for him.
Any other input? Okay, are there any additional nominations? Marcy?
I'd like to nominate Teresa Farley.
Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Any discussion?
I just feel that she's done a lot to help collaborate with the community and the parents, and I know Mr. Young mentioned in one of the more recent meetings that he may not be running for reelection at some point, so I think that a new chair coming in while he's still here would be a good idea.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we will take these in the order in which they were nominated. This takes a roll-call vote. So for Rich Young, as chair, roll-call vote, beginning with Marcy, yea or nay?
Nay.
Zeke?
Yea.
Teresa?
Nay.
Megan?
Yea.
Aye.
Rich? Okay.
Aye.
And Rich Young votes aye. So that is a four-to-two vote for Teresa Farley. Roll-call vote. Marcy?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
And that's a two-four against Mrs. Farley. At this time, I would declare that Rich Young is the chairperson of the Middleborough Public School Committee, and he now will take over the meeting. Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate the members of my community, and Rich, thank you for those kind words. Chair will entertain a motion, open the nominations and entertain nominations for vice chair.
Mr. Oakley? Meg, go ahead.
I'd like to nominate Zeke. I'll expand upon that later, I guess, yeah.
I have a nomination for Zeke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion on Zeke. Meg, you want to go?
I just like that Zeke, just, he really wants to learn, and I think that, like Mr. Oakley said when he nominated you, that being vice chair is a really good way to learn, and so I welcome that.
Sure. Mr. Chair, I just believe in giving people chances when they ask, and I got a phone call, a nice phone call from Zeke about that, and so I wanted to give him that chance.
Any further discussion about Zeke? Chair, entertain other nominations for vice chair. Hearing none. We can do it by acclamation because there is only one. All those in favor of Zeke Lewis say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you, Christine. Chair, entertain a motion to nominate Christine Albert as the secretary to the school committee.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Christine has been our longtime secretary to the school committee. This is sort of our usual. Emma, any other questions or discussion? Mr. Oakley?
Sure. I just want to take the opportunity again to say how great the minutes are that she puts together, and, I mean, we're voting on some minutes again today, and I, just reading through them, they're just really great. And I've, you know, we've all probably seen other minutes, and they're very different than these. So I think that she serves us really well, and also she loves candy, so... But I guess I would just ask, will she accept?
Yeah, that's a big yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Welcome for another year, Christine. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt Robert's Rules of Order 11th edition, 12th edition, excuse me, which is now the current edition.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
This is just, again, this is a typical piece for us. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Chair, entertain a motion to set our dates, time, and place as the first and third Thursdays of the month, and the school committee will continue to meet at seven o'clock at Middleborough High School in the auditorium unless otherwise noted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Yes, Meg?
That excludes vacation weeks, though, because we have to talk about...
Yeah, so what we normally do is when we put out the, what we'll do is, we've taken vacation weeks off of this calendar year. We establish what we meet for the summertime. We generally meet once a month during the summertime, and then, at some point during the summer, we bring up what our calendar will look like for the year, and we take vacation times off there, and move those around. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Signing of warrants. What we have done recently in COVID has made it that we've allowed any member to sign warrants, primarily because it was if somebody gets sick. Generally speaking, it's the chair and one other person who signs warrants. I think this has been, you know, I've been able to do it for the most part. On a couple of occasions, when I was out of town, the vice chair did it. But that, I would still like to keep that any member can sign warrants, if that's okay with the, so with that, the chair entertain a motion that all members be allowed to sign warrants.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? And just so everyone knows, warrants are to pay the bills of the school, and so what happens is, generally, once a week, there's a packet of warrants that I review. If I have questions, I sign them, and then they get sent to the town treasurer's office. The treasurer reviews them, and then the bills get paid. And so they are also included on our consent agenda, too.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to say, under discussion for that, that it was probably one of the more educational experiences I've had to sign the warrants, because you get to look through those, you know, hundreds of pages, and everyone that's in the business office is super helpful in explaining things, so if people get a chance to do it, I would, I would, you know, it sounds kind of boring, but it was actually really enlightening, so I would encourage it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. As in the past, I will send everybody the list of subcommittees for the school committee, and I will send those, but I will say one thing, that because of her, we lost Greg. Greg was serving with me as, on the negotiation subcommittee. In the past, Meg has served with me in some of the negotiations, so I'm going to put Meg on that subcommittee, especially with the teachers' contract. And then, as I've said before, when we start negotiations with other groups, I'll have some of you included in that and work with me or Meg on that. So I just wanted to point that out right now. And with that, chair, entertain a motion to adjourn reorganization.
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And thank you very much, everybody. It's unanimous. Now we'll go to the regular agenda of the school committee, as soon as I bring that page in. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone have anything that they wish to talk about that's not on tonight's agenda? Welcome.
Hello? Hi. I was just, wanted to come back. I know the last time I was here, or at the last meeting, I had brought up the pledge that was required, or then not required, by the school, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion pledge, and I just wanted to kind of, it's more for the community to be aware of, so there has been a lot of advocacy around that pledge, and whether it's something that should be a required element or not. I know at the last meeting, the athletic director did change it after we emailed him to a non-required element, but it took several months in contact with MIAA to understand whether they were requiring this or not, because as we do now know, they presented it to all of the member schools as a requirement for participation in sports. So it in turn was presented to our athletes as this was required to participate in sports, but it becomes a problem of compelled speech. So we now know, after five months of advocacy, that it is not compulsory for students to be forced to sign something in exchange for participation in their sports. So they have a right to participate in sports as part of their school, and this had to come from MIAA's legal team. So I think, I wanted the community to know that no student need, or coach, for that matter, or administrator, because that was how it was presented by MIAA, that administrators, athletic directors, coaches, athletes, were all required to sign this pledge. So, and they left it as very confusing, or very much implied that this was a required element to be able to participate in any sports. And students in other districts and other towns did not, refused participation for not, you know, participating in this compelled speech type of thing. So I know from the school committee, you were saying, well, we need to listen to what MIA tells us, they tell us what to do, which is the same thing we heard, DESI tells us what to do, but I really think it is important for us to always consider what they're asking us to do. Is this a required thing, or is this a framework? Are they suggesting that we teach our athletes about diversity and inclusion and equity, and that's a framework? Well, that's one thing. Can it be required for them to sign something to participate? It sounds like that's a no, at least based on the press release that I got today. So I just want to share that with the school committee. I think it's important for all of us, as we, as we move forward after two years of kind of, you know, looking at things from a different perspective, that we should not always be taking things from any agency, whether it be MIAA or DESI, at face value. We have to look at it, whether, you know, how it's being implemented, and it doesn't even sound like it's, in this scenario, it's legal, that legally they can, you know, compel students or coaches to sign things like that. Looks like there were coaches that were upset, too, because they felt their job would be compromised, I'm not saying in Middleborough, I'm saying across the state, you know, if they didn't comply with this. So while I think that's a good initiative to do something like this, you know, I think that's great initiatives. I have a problem with kind of the implicit bias piece and some of the things that, you know, the compelled speech. So I just want to make sure the community knew, administrators knew, that we don't have to just do what they tell us because they said so. So I just want that, to bring that up to everybody's attention.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one. Next item on our agenda is reports from school committee members. So to start with, I'd like to just say a couple things. I want to echo the words that Brian had said earlier about Mr. Catino. It's a sad loss with the town of Middleborough. I enjoyed the lengthy periods of time I got to spend with Frank, not only in negotiation, but just having conversations about things that were going on. Frank was a very open and honest person, and always had a good conversation, so I appreciate everything that Frank had done for our community, and especially really the work that Frank would constantly do for kids, in working to make sure that there were opportunities for them, and I really appreciate that. I did want to say something, give the community an update on what's happening with the high school. As, as everyone knows, we had an overnight incident here. I, I do want to go into the fact, first and foremost, that it is still a police matter under investigation. I know that the superintendent had a conversation with Middleborough Police yesterday. It's still an active investigation. They expressed how they're pursuing the matter, which I'm not going to get into, but as I've said time and time again, we have the utmost confidence in the Middleborough Police Department and in what they do, and we know the perpetrators will be caught. But I do want to take a couple of moments to thank some people. First and foremost, I feel like a lot of times I come up here and I say it over and over again, and I know the school community gets it, but I hope the community does, too. The person who found out about the markings was Hutch. It was a Sunday. It's Hutch's day off. Hutch is not supposed to work the weekend. Hutch comes by the schools every day, and by every day, I mean every day, and so that does a walkthrough in the morning, just to make sure everything's set, and that's the type of person Hutch is, and for him to be there and for him to immediately react, again, is the type of person we have running our facilities, so I can't say enough for Hutch. I also do want to really thank Roy Morse. Roy's from the class of 2011, and he almost immediately reached out to Hutch, and he's the owner of LMM Asphalt in Middleborough, and he paid for the cleaning of the school. He hired an outside vendor, also from Middleborough, named All Washed Up. That man is Jason Graca. And so we thank Mr. Morse for his contribution. It wasn't a situation that was asked for, he just went out and did it as a good member of the community, so we want to thank that. I also want to thank all the parents who showed up the day after, the Monday after, to sort of let everyone know that they were behind them. It was a good crowd and a good amount of people. I also want to thank Bran. You know, again, Sunday's Bran's day off, too. Sometimes we forget that. I know Paul forgets that sometimes, but that's the kind of person he is. And I can't say enough how respected he is in the community, and how the community responds to him. And I've, I've said it, and I will continue to say it, the reason my children went to Middleborough High School is about Bran, and Bran alone. We looked at other places to take our kids to high school, as other people will do. It was Bran's approach, and Bran sitting there selling the high school and explaining his vision of what happens, and also, he was, I've been to other places and seen people say, you know, "Thank you for coming, but, you know, you should be happy to be here." Bran's, Bran's that different person that explains that he's, "Thank you for looking at Middleborough, and thank you for thinking of us. This is why you should choose us," and I really appreciate that. So I wanted to thank those people. It's, you know, it's a, it was a tough time. I felt badly, but I think as happens over and over and over again, Middleborough response all across the spectrum, so I did want to say that. And with that, I'll turn it over to other members. Mr. Oakley, go ahead.
Sure. First, I just, I didn't want to leave out just my sorrow for what Mr. Catino's family must be going through right now, and I always found him to be someone who was really kind of down-to-earth and logical, and could kind of put the emotion aside, and I used to really enjoy his, all his different ties that he would wear, and just prayers to his family on that. And secondly, I wanted to talk quickly about the, the high school incident, and I'm so happy to see the way that the community has come out in support of all those that were hurt. I mean, not, not the least of which, obviously, Mr. Branigan, and I hope he feels it, all the love, because I, as far as I can tell, one of the best things we got going here in Middleborough is Mr. Branigan. But I also wanted to take a moment just to acknowledge that there's another, kind of, there was another kind of target as well in that vandalism, and I know of one particular young lady that couldn't, did not feel comfortable coming to that school, this school, while that was still, you know, kind of on the walls before, before it got fixed, and again, just a huge thanks to the people who acted quickly to fix that. But I just want those folks to know that, that we're here for them, too. So I just wanted to quickly say, as, as my school committee report, that I've been in communication, this is a separate topic now, with Joanne Babin. We've been monitoring that Senate bill, S2518, an act authorizing the treasurer of the town of Middleborough to pay from available funds to Middleborough High School students, parents, or guardians, amounts paid but not reimbursed for the cost of the 2020 senior trip. That's the whole title. Since probably the summer of last year, I've been checking it every few days, and it was a little exciting there for a little bit in October, and we saw, ooh, it got a second reading, and kind of hopeful that it would move, move forward from there, and we'd get some sort of resolution. And I want to acknowledge that there is a lot of really critical, important stuff going through the House and the Senate right now, but I also just want to acknowledge that the, the amount of money that these families are out is not insignificant, and I'd, I'd really love to get a resolution soon. And so I've, I've emailed Senator Pacheco, and also the Senate President, and the, the rest of our reps and senators a few times, and they, they do respond, and they say they're kind of doing everything they can, and I believe that, but I do think it would be helpful to hear from more people on these issues, too. And so if you get a moment, it's just Senate Bill 2518, and I think that the families that are out this money would really appreciate some additional outreach to the, to our members of the House and Senate. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oakley. Anybody else? Zeke, go right ahead.
Regarding Frank Catino, my brother was there when he passed, and from what he told me, he, he was with family, doing what he loved. I just wanted to make that clear, because I think that's just an amazing story. He was playing D and D. His last role tonight was a nat 20, which, for those of you who play D and D, is, is the best role that you can get. Sorry, I was just geeking out over that, but, yeah. He was an amazing man.
With that, I will move on. Next up is the MEA co-presidents. Welcome, Sam and Kate.
Thank you for having us. We don't have a lot to report tonight, but we just have a few points. Quarter four began at the high school today, so we're three-quarters of the way through the school, which is hard to believe, and it seems to go so fast, but then seems to go slow at times, so we're moving through pretty well. And on the notes for MEA, we're, we're still negotiating our professional contract, hopefully wrapping that up in a, a meeting or two. Hopefully, we'll get that one done, to be followed up with the ESP and cafeteria contracts after that. And I'm going to turn it over to Kate.
Thank you. Let's see, MCAS exams are really underway in all levels. Middleborough High School did have biology exams in February, and again, they'll have them in June. They get, you had ELA in March. Nichols Middle School started their ELA, MCAS exams this week, and I really just wanted to report and thank everybody for their efforts to pull the HBB and MKG school testing to a really tight, really workable schedule. We are now able to, thank you to the technology that we have and our technology people, do all three tests, grades three, four, and five, all in the same day by school. So Mary K. Good went yesterday, they had three, three, four, and five testing all at the same time, and we went today, and it's working wonderful. It really will bring down the school-wide changes in the schedule and, and just makes it a lot smoother, and then everybody's all on board, and grades one and two really supported us this year by giving us a lot of encouragement as well. And then, as you all have heard, you know, our association and our school community and the whole town of Middleborough did have a tragic loss this week, a loss of a great man. Frank, who was our former MEA president for many years, vice president before, was a friend to all, a great guy. He was a mentor to Sam and to me, and he will be remembered very fondly and missed very greatly. That's it.
Any questions for the presidents?
See you soon. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Next up is Natalia. Welcome, Natalia.
So for this week, starting off with the MECC, the MECC is preparing for a very, very busy spring with lots going on. With help of the fantastic PTA, they have some fun and engaging enrichment events happening. They have musicians, storytellers, and magicians coming to entertain and teach. They are also planning a field day and a parade to first grade for our kindergarteners. There will also be a patriotic performance, chick hatching, caterpillars to butterflies, sing-along, and field trips to the fire station, library, and Pierce Playground, amongst many others. For the MKG, the ELA MCAS has begun for students in grade three, four, and five. They have completed session one of English Language Arts so far. The students are focused and working hard. The MECC has many end-of-the-year activities planned. A few of these include the third-grade play, camp read-a-lots for grades one and two, a field trip to Barney's Joy for grade four, a visit to Roger Williams for grade two, a variety of shows for grades five, along with a few other field trips and field days still being planned. There is also events focused on finishing the year with many opportunities for learning and growth for all students. Next, for the HBB, it's MCAS season. Last week, on Friday, they celebrated their first HBB MCAS rally in three years. The MCAS rally has been a tradition for the HBB every year, as they bring the whole school community together to celebrate all their hard work and to talk about the importance of hard work and perseverance. It was great being able to get everyone together again. They would also like to send out a huge thank you to all the parents and teachers who are, who organized this year's Read-A-Thon, as well as a thank you to everyone who participated for their support. This year, the event raised almost $32,000. All of the proceeds go right back to the kids in the form of enrichment, author visits, field trips, and Husky, the Husky Haven, and so much more. For Nichols Middle School, the NMS eighth graders... For Nichols Middle School, the NMS eighth graders had a successful basketball game playing against teachers and staff. The students proudly won this game against their teachers. MCAS began this week at NMS. The eighth graders just completed the ELA portion of MCAS. The sixth and seventh graders will be taking the ELA test next week. The project, or the NMS Project 351 Ambassador, Ms. Lily Pierce, held her clothing drive for Cradles for Crayons, and she would like to thank everyone for their donations. The Builders Club is planning two dances for this spring. For sixth and seventh graders, however, they are still looking for a DJ. Any suggestions can be made to Mr. Redpath. The eighth-grade dance will be held on Thursday, June 16. NMS would like to thank their PTA for their donation and supporting their motivational speaker, David Flood, to speak to the sixth and seventh graders. And a big shout-out goes out to all of the NMS students who participated in the STEM Fair. There were many entries displaying great science and technology minds at work. Congratulations to the winners in each category. And lastly, for MHS, the official ribbon cutting for our new school and the rededication of the Wayne M. Karen Auditorium will take place next Thursday, April 14, at 3:00 PM in front of the high school. A reception and tours of the school will follow the event. Springo Bingo will also be that Thursday, hosted by Student Council. This event will take place from 7:00 to 8:30 PM. I'm sorry. Senior dues need to be collected for all members of the class of 2022. Dues are $50 and should be paid no later than Friday, April 14. Dues can be paid in cash or a bank check slash money order. Checks are payable to the town of Middleborough. All dues can be paid by seeing Mrs. Holmgren in the main office. The senior prom will be held at the Grand View in Mendon on Tuesday, May 31 at 5:00 PM. Tickets are on sale now, and you can see Mrs. Holmgren in the office to purchase. The junior prom will be held at the Middleborough Town Hall on Saturday, May 7, at 6:00 PM. The following clubs will be taking place at Wednesday, on Wednesdays, at 2:00 PM. Key Club in room C 149, GSA in room C 158, and Yes Club in room C 159. And lastly, all members of the National Honor Society are offering a program to all students in all classes, allowing for weekly meetings with the one-on-one tutor. This is a free tutoring opportunity. Please reach out to Mr. Goldman if you are interested. Thank you.
Natalia, that I have for you is how are you doing? You don't have much time left.
It's weird. I think about it, and I'm like, oh, my gosh. I don't know. I, it's like a bittersweet feeling. I'm excited for what's next, but it's very weird to know I'm not coming back. I don't know. Scary.
Well, because, I mean, you're here announcing everything, you know, like senior prom and everything like that, that isn't that far away.
Yeah.
And so those things are sort of on the horizon.
Yes.
Rich, you had a question? Go right ahead.
Yeah. So, I mean, given that, are you kind of like shepherding someone along to take your spot at some point?
I've been looking. I've been asking around. I'm not sure. That's something I'm going to have to talk to Brand about, but I'm not sure yet. I'm looking.
Okay. Well, if they get your approval, I guess it's good for us, too.
Not a question, just a statement of how happy it makes me to hear all of the activities that are happening again at the end of the year. So that just made me really happy to hear.
Me, too.
Any other questions, Natalia? You do realize that the next time we meet, what the big question will be?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Just so we're clear.
I'll have my answer ready.
We've got you a couple more weeks, but then we'll go from there. So Natalia, as always, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll turn it over to the superintendent for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, and good evening to all the members of the committee and those in the audience tonight. I have, my first report is COVID-19, as I've done for the last couple of years. It's been number one. And I would like to provide some community information and then school information. In our community, the town of Middleborough's public health reports includes a low community positivity rate of .02%. This represents 15 positive PCR official lab-reported positive cases in the community over the last seven days. There was one positive at lab PCR case, was a school-aged child. Two cases were under the age of five. This week's DICE reports of new positive cases in the district from Thursday, March 30th to Wednesday, April 7th, where the data includes at-home testing reports and PCR lab reports, is five new cases. It has been diminished as the week has gone by. A view of the district data dashboard for today would indicate that we have total active cases in the district of three. Now, that's up slightly from zero, as you know, which was exciting. And we went to one, then we went to three. We know there's a little bit of slight uptick in the region, in the community. So we'll watch that carefully and continue to be on guard with regard to cleansing, cleaning the buildings and mitigation strategies and keeping the water bubbles off at this point. The water fillers are on for all the students that want to bring bottles to school. So we'll continue with that. And that completes my COVID-19 report, Mr. Chair. If there's any questions from anyone?
Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Go right ahead.
Seeing none, we'll move on in our, I'd like to invite Ms. Caitlin McSweeney to the microphone. Caitlin's the coordinator of the Plymouth Area Prevention Collaboration. She's been here before, providing the results of a survey that we sent out last year. And tonight, she's here requesting permission to do another survey, the same survey, with our students to collect additional data, anonymous data that's collected and reported back to the school committee in a summary form and used in terms of data to apply for grants and continue the programs that are in place. So we certainly welcome Caitlin here tonight. This is a survey that is an optional survey, and parents can opt out of this survey. It's not required for students, but it's important data that we move on. So Caitlin, welcome, and thank you for coming. And the floor is yours.
Thank you for having me. As mentioned, this is the same survey that we conducted last year through our prevention initiatives. My name's Caitlin. I'm a prevention coordinator through High Point Treatment Center, and we have grant funding to work in Middleborough as well as surrounding communities to provide programming around prevention initiatives, you know, working with the Stadium Supporters Club, as well as our community coalition, Middleborough Matters. And I really just wanted to come today to see if anyone had questions about the survey. And I know the last time I was here for the survey last year, we added some additional questions about COVID-19 and how students have felt on their substance use, you know, related to COVID-19. So I do have those surveys included again, since, you know, we still have COVID going on. So, yeah.
Any questions from the school committee?
Sure. Thank you. I know that the information we get from this can be really helpful for a whole bunch of things. The, and the only question I had was just specifically around the notification to parents and the opportunity to opt out, just making sure that people have notice on that. But otherwise, I think it seems like good information to get and could be really beneficial. So I just wanted to hear just a little bit about how soon do people get notified and how much time do they have to opt out?
Yes, that's a great question. So we do have a consent form that goes to parents, and we typically work with the school leaders, the assistant principals that work on conducting the survey and coordinating it with the schools, to send a notice of a passive consent form. And parents can return that within three days, is how we have it on the form, if they don't want their child to participate in the survey. So when that happens, if a parent opts out, we make sure that that student doesn't receive the link to complete the survey.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you explain, like, the process of the kids taking the survey? Are they taking it in school? And their, we called advisory, I don't know what it's called here, but just kind of how that works in the school?
Yeah, that's a great question. So it is an online survey. So typically, I work with Ms. Loco and Latander to, for each of their schools at NMS and Middleborough High. They work towards what works for their schedule. Typically, we do this in the springtime around April. So whether they decide that it's a certain block or advisory, I think last year, we did do advisory block for the survey. So teachers were informed and got the link via email. And then the teacher put that link in the, I think, you guys use Google Classroom? The Google Classroom, so students can click it and take the survey then.
And Caitlin, just a question, just a clarification. There's a Middleborough committee, and on it, who are the members on the committee, the members of this committee that represent our school system and represent our town?
Sure. In the Middleborough Matters Coalition, our school folks.
Yes, Middleborough Matters.
Yep. So we have Laura Loco, Heidi Latander, Meg Quirk. I work with Mr. Brannigan a lot. I've also worked with Sean Zilliano to get things on our TV screens. So those are the folks I'm thinking of the top of my head. I know it's been a very busy year for school leaders as well. So I've definitely worked also with Ms. Alicia Lane, who is the advisor for the Stadium Supporters Club, and Mr. Finch at the middle school as well.
Thank you.
That it would be sent home on a form that parents would have to sign to opt out?
Yeah.
I just may be able to share the logistical pieces of how it's done. So basically, with the approval that the middle school and high school would work collaboratively on a timeline. So it would go through, the consent form actually would be sent in an email that would go to all parents. So basically, they would then reply to the email or simply down, whatever the process would be the easiest for them, to just let us know they want to opt out. And then what we do is, we collect those names. We would then be working with Sean, in particular, and the tech center to make sure the fact that those students are taken out of the email that would go out to those students. And then whatever the timeframe we choose, whether it be the beginning of first period of the day, or an advisory or something, then those teachers would receive the directions to read to the students. And the survey takes literally about five to 10 minutes to do. So basically, what we would do is, is let's say in a hypothetical that, and this is not even in place yet, so I'm just going to use it as a hypothetical, that on like a Monday, it would go out to all families and be from Monday to Friday, that it would be that you have the week to let us know. And then basically, after that, then we would then spend a few days preparing that the following week to make sure that we have everyone who wanted to opt out is out. Survey at that time. And it's only certain grades. It's only grades nine, 11, and 12, I believe, this time around. Is that correct?
Yeah. We also have at NMS, yep, grades six, seven, and eight.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ma'am, go right ahead.
Thank you so much for the description of the logistics, because that was part of my question, also the age ranges. But are the parents going to be provided sort of a sample of what the questions are so that they can make a truly informed decision whether they want to opt in or opt out?
I think that would be very easy to do. We just have to work with the IT department to figure out how to put that into the letter. So I think that's easily to be done. I mean, the survey itself, and I respect why you want to see it, and we can probably work on to figure out how to do that. But the survey itself is completely anonymous. So it really is tracking, you know, data of really potential substance use in our students. And then to allow, between Middleborough Matters and the schools, to be able to look at that data and to be able to discern, well, what do we need to be doing? Because if we're seeing a collective bubble in some way, shape, or form, whether positive, then how do we capture that and keep that going? Or an area of concern, then how do we navigate that to make sure what programming, whatever we could put in? So just the context of really the questions. But we can work on with Caitlin and with Middleborough Matters of how to take that electronic survey and maybe put it into a document somehow that you can see a series of those questions.
Understood. Thank you. Also, follow-up. Is this in sort of like collaboration with this SEL program that's being implemented?
No. It is truly through the Middleborough Matters and the Plymouth County Substance Abuse Coalition. So I don't think it has any, they're totally two different.
Gotcha. Different focus. Understood.
Thank you.
Hearing none, the chairman, take a motion to approve the survey to go out to students.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you, Caitlin, for coming. And when can we anticipate the results? I know they have to be processed at a data warehouse, and then they come back. So as soon as they're available, if you could contact me and have you reappear with the results so that you can share with the community and the school committee?
Yes, absolutely. Typically, we, if we get the survey completed before, like, the end of April, early May, we should be able to get those results in mid-August, to have those before the start of the next school year.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chair, I'll continue with my report. Moving on to the, and Natasha stole my thunder a little bit, but the Middleborough High School ribbon-cutting ceremony is coming up next Thursday at 3:00 PM. There's been a committee organizing that for a while, and the announcements will come out. And Sean is here, our communications expert. Is it going to be on the website to invite people?
Everyone's invited. It'll be a large gathering. We thank Boston Tavern and Mr. Brannigan for coordinating. Again, it's a Brannigan production. And he'll be coordinating the food with the folks at the tavern. So anyone in the community is welcome to come and take a tour of the school, enjoy some nice food from the tavern, light fare, and enjoy the ribbon-cutting ceremony for a beautiful facility that we have. So we're very proud of it, and we want to share it with the world, so especially with the community, that's for sure. So that is next Thursday at 3:00 PM.
Teresa has a question.
Something that came up when I had shared it was, people were wondering, since it is so early in the afternoon, which is completely fine, but will there be opportunities, maybe on a weekend, for tours for people who cannot make that ceremony?
I think that's something that Mr. Brannigan has, we've thought about for a while, opening this place on a Saturday or Sunday, now that we're fully open. So I guess we can work on that, maybe announce that at the ribbon-cutting ceremony. So, because it's going to be filmed.
There will also be another event upcoming, which I'll probably have for you at the next meeting. That'll be more weekend-oriented event that will include, I have to have a conversation with Paul about it, but it should be, there would be more opportunities.
And this ribbon-cutting ceremony will also, we'll also have the rededication of the Wayne M. Karen Auditorium by the military, the veterans in town will be taking care of that. So that will also be part of this ceremony. Okay? Moving on, I invite Sarah Hickey. Yep, up to the table. She's already here and has been here every meeting. I should have noticed that. And she is going to report out on the before and after-school childcare request for proposals.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Lynch and school committee members. In this process, my office follows Mass General Law 30B, which is also called the Uniform Procurement Act. And it is the law that we follow for procuring supplies and services. And the law was put in place to ensure fair and open competition. And there are some thresholds in the Uniform Procurement Act. If we, as a district, are going to be spending under $10,000, it's our duty to keep the taxpayers in mind that we're spending their money and do our due diligence to spend their tax dollars wisely. If we're spending over $10,000 but under $50,000, we have to go up, we have to get quotes. You have to solicit three quotes and go with the lowest quoted price. And then anything over $100,000, we are required to either go out to bid or to do what's called a request for proposals. So because the before and after-school, and these money amounts apply to when we spend money, but also when we get money. So because the contract for before and after-school care has the possibility of giving the district more than $100,000 over the course of a three-year contract, we have to go through the bid or RFP process. And so on January 19, Superintendent Lynch and I made the decision to use the RFP process. The request for proposal process allows us to examine the proposal from a vendor separate from any pricing proposal. There's, you know, we make an evaluation based on the criteria that has been given out in the proposal without the influence of any money on it. Then once that decision, once that evaluation has been made, then the price proposals are opened. So I will talk about that in a minute. So in this Massachusetts General Law 30B, there's a legal advertising portion of it. So the request for proposal was posted in my office. It was posted online at COMBIES through the state. It was posted in the Goods and Services Bulletin with the state and in the legal notices of the Brockton Enterprise. The request for proposal was available to vendors on February 7. It was due back to my office on March 1. With the cooperation of Sean Siciliano and the tech department, I was able to host the bid documents all online. And so we have a record of who picked up the bids. It was picked up by eight vendors. Actually, I'm going to say it was eight vendors. It was really nine vendors, but one of them was an HVAC company that I think clicked on the wrong link and they were looking for the mech boiler bid. So it was picked up by an HVAC corp, a company, and eight childcare vendors. And out of those eight childcare vendors, we received three proposals. Part of the RFP process was to check the evaluation criteria with references that the vendor supplied. So there are, the people that applied do business in other districts. So I sent out a Google form to other districts and collected information over the period of three to four weeks. And then the evaluation team met and reviewed proposals. The evaluation team was Superintendent Lynch, incoming Superintendent Carolyn Lyons, or pupil personnel director Carolyn Lyons, however you want to refer to her, myself as the facilitator, and the three elementary principals. So we met and reviewed the proposals using the evaluation criteria. And the team selected the vendor that I have presented to you in the letter that you received in the Dropbox. So the group selected unanimously Champions to be our vendor and to offer them a three-year contract with the school committee's approval.
Sarah, a couple of questions. First, was Champions the preferred choice without the money?
Yes.
And was Champions's contribution greater in the way it's set up?
So the way I have the money piece of the evaluation set up, we can look at the amount of money that comes into the district and the amount of money that the parents are going to pay. So the Champions proposal was the least cost to the parents, highest return to the district.
Thank you. Any other questions about this particular proposal? Mr. O.
Thank you very much. I found, I was not a voting member the last time we put this out for bid, but it was very educational for me, especially around, and my antenna always goes up with stuff like this, where I don't, I don't know how obvious it is to folks in the public exactly how this works, but it was really cool to see that there was a very substantive discussion about the proposals. And there were these envelopes sitting in the corner of the room, and only after the decision was made on what program was the strongest, were those envelopes opened, where the money came out. And I think that it's cool to see that as a, you know, member of the public. And so I just wanted to give a thumbs up for that. But the question I had about Champions was, obviously, maybe it's not a great time to figure this out because of the significant disruptions over the past couple of years. But I know that when Champions and all the vendors, for that matter, submitted their proposals in 2019, I guess it was, they had made some projections on what the money coming into the district would be. And I don't need specifics at all, but I was just wondering if they were pretty close to what they had promised or if we really can't use it because of COVID.
So the spreadsheet that I give out with the RFP is just model data. You could look at it to say, it really asks, how much would you charge a family if they had a student come once a day in the morning, I'm sorry, once a week in the morning, once a week in the afternoon, twice a week in the morning, twice a week in the, so it breaks it down that way so we can look at exactly what they would charge families. And then it says, using this example, if you had this many students in the program at this location, what would it be? What percentage of that would come to the district? So it really allows us to really drill down and look at it. You know, I had children that went to a before and after-school care program, and the check that I wrote every month really mattered. And so this is something that we can look at in this proposal to know exactly that we're doing the best for the parents and the community.
Great. Thank you.
Sarah, the other question I have is, given that the committee chose Champions for the recommendation, does Champions still have the opportunity to run programs, vacations, and summer?
Yes.
Thank you. Other questions for people? Meg.
I just want to make sure that we can get Champions in here at some point to just do a program overview and all that.
Sounds.
Thank you.
They're very amenable to that.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, the chairman entertain a motion to take the recommendation of the before and after-school childcare proposal evaluation team and recommend Champions be awarded the program for July 1st, 2022 through July 30th, 2025. June, sorry.
Still moved.
Do I have a second? Discussion. Hearing none, the scene none, anybody else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. I do want to say one thing. In my current company and my previous company, I do handle RFPs. I do work a lot on RFPs. I will say Sarah is singularly the most hardcore person I've seen, and she does a fantastic job with it, and she follows it to the letter of the law. And I appreciate that. I appreciate that when I do RFPs, to make sure that people do that. And to be honest with you, that's part of the reason why, you know, people are allowed to protest and go through a process of protest. The protests don't get sustained because we follow it very clearly and outline the way it's supposed to be according to the terms of the RFP. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, my final note of my report for this evening is just a reminder that we have, it does say special town meetings on my report, but it's a special town meeting and a regular town meeting, both on April 25th, 2022, right here in this venue, in this beautiful auditorium. So I would invite everyone in the community to come on down. It's a vote of the people, and you're all welcome, obviously. And just a reminder, April 25th, it's Monday, correct?
Yes.
It's a Monday.
Is it seven?
7:00 PM. Thank you.
I know that this happened last year, but do you know if they're going to be offering babysitting services during the meeting?
I'm not sure.
No. I thought you were going to say you were.
Do you have a question on the town meeting?
I do not. I was waiting for that to finish.
Oh, okay.
Okay. That concludes my report.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is the MSBA building report, the school building project. The superintendent and I have documents to sign tomorrow that Kristen Murphy's sending over about the, it's sort of finishing up the end of the budget pieces. The project is still under budget. And as we mentioned, we're having the event, which is essentially the ribbon-cutting, which is important. But am I missing anything else that's going on? I know you guys meet more regularly.
We have a meeting next, the building committee meets next week.
Next week.
And public is invited to that. We meet in the Selectman's Town Hall, and this is also available via Zoom. And it's a posted meeting.
And what time is that?
The 5:00.
5:00.
5:00 PM.
Do you have a question on that?
I had a question for the superintendent, just in general.
Oh.
So, and I apologize if this isn't the appropriate moment to ask it. You alluded to, Mr. Young, in your opening, when you were talking about the different committees, about the contract negotiations, and I was just curious as to the general timelines for those different contract negotiations in terms of, I've no, I've heard in the news in the past that there's issues always if things aren't completed in time for a next school year. So I was just curious if maybe some details about what the general process is in terms of making sure that all those negotiations are completed.
We have six unions that we negotiate with. All six have their contracts up at exactly the same time.
Oh, that's.
We have tried to change that, but it, we need to tango, so to speak.
Gotcha.
We generally find, and it's been past practice, that we deal with the teacher's contract first because that's the, that has the most moving parts. And so I would tell you that we are near the end of that. Then we move to the other unions and go from there. The other thing too is, just to be clear, one of the reasons we also do that is the teachers' union in Middleborough, the Middleborough Education Association, represents two other unions, the cafeteria workers and the.
Educational support personnel.
Education support, I can't remember how we, it's fine. So there's that, and then we have other unions, secretarial unions, we have custodial unions. And I think I've hit upon everybody.
Many bus drivers.
Many bus drivers. Thank you. So then what typically happens, to be honest with you, in most cases, I found, some end early, before the end of the school year, some end during the summertime. I can only think of, and I've helped negotiate two rounds of contracts, six each, and we've only had one last beyond. Sometimes pieces get put off. So for example, last time we did most of the teacher's contract with the exception of one particular piece that we agreed to keep working on, and we continued to work on that. And so to be honest, that didn't get finished up until January of this year because it was a piece we needed to go back and forth on, as you can imagine COVID. The other thing that's sort of different this year is that town manager's not involved in our negotiations. He has been in the past, but I keep Bob informed, and we do that to make sure that we're we're having the same conversations that the town is with our unions, because I believe in fairness and equity. I would say this, for the most part, it works out pretty well. It's me and another member. I'm very happy the superintendent and Sarah are always involved, but good crew from the administration this year. Carolyn's been there from the beginning, as has Heidi Latander. And in the teachers' union, we went with a particular kind of bargaining. It's called interest-based bargaining. It's not the traditional bargaining unit in which we spend a lot more time discussing issues and stories related to issues. We have sort of a mediator who helps run that. We also have our attorneys with us. So it's, it's an interesting aspect. I've tried to get members involved. I think for the most part, it works out really, really well. I believe we have a good relationship with all of our unions. And part of it's about having conversations all the time.
Does the transition of school committee members and the potential transition of superintendent, while these processes are ongoing, have detrimental, unforeseen and perfectly acceptable? But does it have a negative impact on those negotiations? Or obviously, if Ms. Lyons has been there from the beginning, they're transition okay. But just kind of curious, is the timing of town elections and things makes some of those negotiations kind of have to wait longer than you might wish?
The only, to be honest with you, we met last week and, you know, been open since the very beginning. Greg Stevens was involved with me in the negotiations. And so when negotiations ended last week, everyone understood that the subcommittees of the school committee are the responsibility of the chair. And so at, tonight, we decided who the chair was. So I couldn't promise anything. I could promise, you know, obviously met with the committee, talked about parameters that we're allowed to negotiate with, so I could promise we were within the parameters, that's it. And then what would happen after that would be totally up to the chair. As I said, in finishing up, Meg's the one person that I've worked with in the past in negotiations, so it made sense that I'm going to point Meg to that committee for this purpose. I've also made it clear to the committee members that this round of contract negotiations would be learning for most of them. So they would, my expectation for them would be, and Marcy's the only one that hasn't heard this, is that they would participate with me in some of the negotiations so I can get my fellow committee members ready for, as we move forward. Past two times, most of the negotiations were done with myself and Brian Givernoni, who is now a member of the Selectman's Office. And occasionally, one or two other people depending upon if, for example, Brian couldn't be there or Brian wasn't able to commit because of his workplace. So it's been good. I think we've worked hard to, I try to keep everybody informed as we move along. We'll have a discussion about that in a little bit. But we really hold to the parameters. I think one of the things that we do maybe a little differently is honest and upfront about numbers. I know exactly what the number that the committee has recommended that we're going to town meeting for. Obviously, I hope the town meeting honors that, and that's the point I negotiate with. And so knowing that there are certain things I can and can't do based on the numbers that we have. I also feel very good about the fact that we have Sarah. And any number I need, I can get from Sarah pretty quickly.
She'll know right where it is on which spreadsheet, so that's wonderful. So just in general, things are on track, I guess you could say, in terms of the timings from, you know, previous years.
I mean, you know, on track is on track. Some take a little longer, some people, some, you know, I don't know. I haven't sat down with any of the other unions yet, so some are pretty quick and easy. Some take a while based on just language. But for the most part, as in every other time, we sort of negotiate along the same parameters. We haven't really changed things for different people, except in some minor cases, based on things.
Well, thank you for the update. And, you know, as committee meetings continue, any type of update, just in terms of whether things are on track or not or how things are progressing through the list of unions you have to negotiate with, would be appreciated, just so that we know that things are running smoothly, so.
And so just to put in perspective, we met eight times. Each time is a three-hour meeting.
Sometimes four or five.
Yeah, five, sorry. So I appreciate the time we spend, and I appreciate that side spending time and having conversations. But I greatly appreciate the time that Mr. Stevens put in. I can't imagine doing it and knowing I had, you know, three meetings left or whatever number you want to give. But he was fantastic in it and had a good time.
He also has a sense of humor which was needed occasionally.
So, thank you. It isn't something that I think I've heard a lot about, the committee's involvement and how integral it is to the process, so I appreciate that.
And I do want to say one thing. We do things differently than other places. I know of places that send their lawyers, and just the lawyers meet with the union. I know of places that send the superintendent and the union, and the lawyers. We don't. We send members of the committee. I think if you ask anybody in there, it is the committee who leads negotiations. It is not the lawyer, because, you know, we're the ones. But by the same token, the other piece that I want to make clear is I don't have to live through the day-to-day operation of a contract. So I rely heavily on my administrators to tell us what they need or what they'd like to see because the principals and the superintendent are the ones who have to live it. And so I'm not going to put anything in there that makes their lives difficult. And that's important to me, too.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Just one other comment, because I'm standing here. And I probably should have said this during the open part, but I do want to add some personal thanks in relation to the vandalism incident. So it hit my family and my children very hard. So I do just want to mention publicly, thanks to Mr. Patrick Converse, who reached out to me personally when he noticed my daughter wasn't present in school to check in, and he had connected the dots in that it could have been the incident that had affected her. So I just want to publicly say how grateful I am for his personal outreach and that it meant a lot. And then also to Bran, with everything that he was going through personally and professionally, he did not neglect each individual student who came to him and the time that he spent with my daughter, talking one-on-one was so important and so meaningful, and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do want to say one thing too, and I, before I forget, it was part of what I should have said. I also want to thank administrators throughout the district. A lot of them came to the high school, did lunch duty, so that Paul could meet individually, had an opportunity to meet with students. And so I want to thank Paul again for his opportunity to be there at lunch with students. But I know, for example, Carolyn and Brian, and I know Ryan. But I know, for example, Carolyn and, and Brian, and I know Ryan did lunches and, and details who are sitting here, so I really appreciate that. And again, I may sound like a broken record, but I will stack up our administration against any in the state or the nation, because I really believe in what they do. So thank you. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is consent agenda. So the chair would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Consent agenda is just the fundraisers, approval of meeting minutes, and approval warrants. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. We have one action item on our agenda, and that's an out-of-state field trip. Berkland wishes to go to Roger Williams Park Zoo in Providence on June 2nd. This is an annual trip. Out-of-state field trips require school committee approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Two things. One is, in looking over our past, we decided not to have a second meeting this month because it was, it would fall on April vacation, so we will not. But I will need a second meeting this month from the committee, so I will be sending you some information. That second meeting will be entirely an executive session. It will have two purposes. One is to do grievances and the second is to fill the members in on negotiations. Okay? I, I'll, I try to hold it on a Thursday because that's what we're sort of used to, but I want to see if anyone's not available, if anyone's going away for family vacation. I just want to take care of that. But other than that, we'll be all set. With that, does anyone have anything else for me before I move to adjourn? Meg.
So after the executive session meeting, when will our next meeting be?
Oh, thank you. So it will be the first Thursday in May, which is May 5th.
Thank you.
Cinco de Mayo.
Cinco de Mayo. With that, chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, everybody. And see you in May.